Good evening, everyone. This is a special meeting of the Arts and Culture Commission. Today is January 27th. Can you have an introduction of the agenda, please?
Good evening, Chair Kivanyan and members of the Commission. Special meeting is being held per Commissioner Derhovanesian's request. We're here today to discuss the Mens in Humanity to Men event. And at this meeting, you're welcome to brainstorm your ideas, talk about the role of the Arts and Culture Commission. And in general, what are your views on this project? Or are you pursuing with this project this year?
Great. And before that, we have, I forgot to go to roll call first.
Commissioner Dever?
Yes.
Derhovanesian?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Blackner is absent. Chairperson Kivanyan?
Here.
The agenda for the January 27th meeting was posted on the bulletin board outside City Hall on January 26th, 2010.
Okay, great. Since Commissioner Derhovanesian, you requested this meeting, I'm gonna let you take the floor and give us any kind of updates or anything from the big committee.
Well, I was invited or appointed to be part of the committee that is going to participate in planning for the commemorative event for April, the week of the remembrance, or April 24th for this year. And in the first meeting that we had, it was discussed that it would be nice, Mayor Quintero and Councilman Aaron Njerian, they said that it would be nice to have Mens in Humanity to Men also as part of our events for the week of remembrance. Because they thought that it was very successful, it had great magnitude, people respected, it was a wonderful event. So that could sort of embellish or make the events that we are planning for this year be as good as we hope it will be. So, well, the next issue was that I need to bring it to the Commission because previously we discussed about Mens in Humanity to Men and we said due to location issues that Brand Library was going to be under renovation and because of the budgetary issue that we need to have major fundraising to be able to do an event of that magnitude. And the time and staff effort and all that stuff that we cannot be able to have Mens in Humanity to Men for this year. So that was part of the thing that we all discussed as this year we would not go for that. But since the council or councilman and the mayor really showed interest, and I do believe that it would be a wonderful idea, since we are here to fulfill the requirements or whatever our city wants us to put together, so I thought I'll bring it to the Commission and go back again over the idea to see if everybody in our committee or in our Commission would like to see if we would be part of it. I know today we won't decide, but this is something that we want to rehash and discuss. And also, if we want to do it, as you said, to brainstorm and see how we can do it because with the limitation of time and money, we need to plan something which would be as respectful, which would be something which would be honored and in the same line of events that we want to have this special week of the remembrance. So here we are to talk about different things. I would like to make my little suggestions and then we'll go from there. Last year, since I was also part of the committee last year, we had some components. One was the art exhibition, which we used Brand Library. And even Councilman Aaron Njerian said that, well, definitely we need to have somewhere like Brand because any less than that would not be sufficient or good enough, or it would not represent, or it would not be grand enough to have what we wanted to do. And for having art, as we all went through the whole process last year, it needs a lot of money and it needs a lot of time and staff time as well. Because we need to get in touch with artists. First of all, we have to discuss it all over, send information all over, not to exclude anybody, not to exclude any group or any racial or historical or anything or anybody who would like to be part of it. That's number one. So that's a major event. Then the second part was that we were supposed to make arrangements with all these artists and to have them send their work to the gallery. We were supposed to make, take care of all the safekeeping part of the issue that was a major issue and hanging. Then we had a curator, so because anything said, it needs to have a story to it. It's not just an exhibition of artworks. So we were supposed to have a kind of, make an image, make a story, make a timeline of whatever was happening in the world. So we hired a curator, which is extremely expensive, even though she did a fantastic job and she deserved every bit, even she donated more time than we could even ask for. But, well, so that is, that is a major part which, and then the choice. I know that Ripsime spent, Ripsime and Mrs. Abamontian, I don't know how many hours was spent on the selection of material the way we needed. So that was one component. Then we had small events that was on the site, because the other one was for a month. And then we had one night for different activities and one was the poetry night, music and poetry night, which was phenomenal. And we have to thank again Arman for making the best choices as far as musicians, because he knows most of the people in the community, in his art and music community. So he introduces them and he even chooses pieces which is appropriate for the event. So we had the music and poetry night, we had the panel of artists discussing historically how these events now take place, how it's expressed through art. And that was a wonderful, wonderful experience as well. So we wanted dance, but we thought it's very difficult because you need to spread the floor for that kind of a presentation, so that was excluded. Now, having in mind whatever we had altogether, the parts that we can repeat could be those small little parts that we did as a satellite event around the major exhibition, and that could be the poetry night and the music, and also a panel of artists maybe discussing or historians who are interested to go on that topic. And I think for that, if you find good people in the community who can contact people of that magnitude and that information and that background without any money, because there is no budget for this. Neither the committee has it for the commemorative events, nor I don't think Commission has, because as we talked, we have talked about the budget to its limits and that's why we couldn't have Mens. So whatever we do is to choose a subcommittee that is knowledgeable and has contacts and could find people who could come and do the presentation the way it needs to be done. And to have people from the Commission who would make sure that it goes towards the direction that is suitable for the Art and Culture Commission and is what our city is expecting, our city council and the commemorative committee would like to have. So we need a conduit between the community event and the Commission and the art world around. So that's basically what I had in mind. So let's see what we can discuss, who knows whom, what we can do, who are the people you could suggest to be there. We could definitely invite people who previously were there because they are already experienced, because the timeline is too short. For the previous event, we might have spent, I don't know, Ripsime, help me, how many sessions did we get together?
We started late December and went about four and a half months.
And how many?
We were meeting every week.
And then how many emails did we send? Because, you know, it's not just the meetings, it was.
Are we just counting you and Rosmik?
No, no, on that one, actually, it wasn't on that one. We were all on it and then we all informed everybody of every little thing that was going on, because this was a Commission event, so everybody should have been on the same page. So from my work time, I can tell that we have spent, God knows, at least, at least one hour every day. That was part of going back and forth of yes and nays and, you know, the papers, the flyers that were printed, whether it was supposed to be on the agenda, what was the news. So it took, it takes a long time to get things done. So I thought with those little parts that we add, we could do it in less time. Okay, thank you.
Good question. Last year, we had a corporate sponsorship. Are you planning to seek for a corporate sponsorship this year?
No. Because that, you know, again, it's a major process to get there and to get the money and then to process it through the city and to see how things are going to be taken care of. So we hope, we hope, but of course, when the committee gets together, we might discuss it more. It should be more on the volunteer basis, people who really want to donate their time and their effort and their artwork to the community through that special event, and they would feel honored to be part of it. This time, we'll make it an honorary system and let's see how it works.
What about fundraising events? Are you planning, do you think that's a good idea? There will be some expenses, I'm sure, like promoting the event, printing postcards or banners like we did last year. I'm sure we're not gonna print a catalog like last year, but still you will need some money. Maybe fundraising will be a good idea.
I was hoping, but you know, that's the point. If we could, if we could come to some kind of conclusion, the sooner better, of course. It might, I don't know, but it might go under the big committee that is planning this for the, because now we are going to be part of, we are collaborating, we are all city, we are all under the city, but we are going to be collaborating for that special event to be one of the activities that city is producing or introducing to the community as a commemorative week of the remembrance.
So is it gonna take place at the same time with the commemorative?
Not the same day, but it's going to be the same week. So I do hope, I need to discuss the details later on, that maybe with the flyers that are being posted and sent to different organizations, talking about April 20, actually 3rd this year, if, and that's not finalized yet, they could talk about that on, let's say, Monday, the 22nd, we have this and whatever they could give on a flyer, they could have all of those activities included. Because last year, it was our event as our event happening in the month of October.
April.
April. This one is, we are in conjunction, working, I mean, doing for the city, repeating or having or including activities. Sort of, we are a subcommittee to the main committee and then we'll have another committee that would help us to get this together. So I hope that money expenses would be taken care of by the city. I can check that. I know you're smiling, I know it's very hard, because they have their own limitations with their expenses too, but I can find out. If it is for public information, if it's for flyers, I think we could be included in whatever they do. But if it is beyond that, yes, then there would be a need to raise money.
Okay, I'm gonna open the floor to my two colleagues, one to my left and one to my right. Commissioners Lee or Dever, any comments or any suggestions or any discussion you wanna have?
Any new ideas?
I have a question. Are there any organizations within Glendale or around that are hosting similar types of events or venues that could be a potential participant in some way, that already have something kind of organized that could fill in some of the holes in this event that you're aware of?
Yes, they are. And, I mean, right now, this committee is, the commemorative committee is trying to recruit, to first of all, make a list of all of the different organizations that are available, some with money and some without, we'll see how it works. Some have volunteered and some have given their names and some we need to go and recruit. And then from the list, we will be choosing the ones that that committee decides would be the best. And as one of those organizations, we are not an organization, we are a commission or some, whatever, under the city, we are one of them that they want us to present the Mens in Humanity to Men. So that's basically how we're feeling in the whole picture.
And actually, even if there are organizations outside of the city that do have some kind of an event, the city doesn't, they're kind of two separate entities. It's either a city entity or a non-city entity. And it's a very few that get included, like, for example, I think in the past, Glendale High School Symphony or choirs have been involved at some, on some level. But it's a very, it's almost a very separate event that the city does specially for the month of remembrance. So, I hope that clarified your?
District also has. District has a commemorative, I mean, they have that special day, they choose one day during that week that they have their event. Usually, they do it at Glendale High, yes. And it's a major program, they have wonderful activities, they have presentations and et cetera. I was even trying to contact, because I wish Joileen would be here, because I wish to contact to see how much our district is going to be willing to be part of, not only having our own separate one, but to be part of the city. I know it might be politically correct or incorrect, I don't know, but I'm sure it would be a great idea to discuss. So the first chance I get, I'll talk to Joileen and maybe even with the superintendent, I get the chance to see how we can do it. Because I know it's a lot of effort as well. And we don't want to be redundant, that means whatever we have already prepared for one event, I don't think we can repeat. If we can do that, that would make it easy, because the kids and everybody would be prepared. So city is one part that could be part of. But last year, sort of, you know, we could have different organizations, like we could have ADL, we could have, you know, Anti-Defamation League, you know, and then we could have different, what's her name, our poetry was chosen from which group?
Lori.
Well, um...
Lori Hipke?
Yes, Lori.
There's a, yeah, there was a...
Hipke, she had, she was part of a group and she introduced the poets and then you brought in the, but you know, I didn't know, but this was new to, even though we all discussed some, I just, that for musicians, we had to pay, I don't know. So we have to see how it works.
That's right, that's always how it is.
With the dancers that we do, we have to pay, I know, because they have to practice and rehearse. It's not just one day's event. So we need to make sure that, within our limitations, because fundraising is a major event. To raise money for any, and besides, I'm not talking about major, big time, but even for small amounts, it's unless, I don't know what would be the venue to see if in the community there are people who just, because they are wonderful people, they want to come and pay for different parts of it.
Commissioner Lee, do you have any thoughts or comments?
Oh, I think it's a very good thing we're trying to do, again, to bring it back. The community enjoys it. So, you know, I would recommend for us to move forward.
Yeah. You know, Facing History does a lot of research on different kind of problems in the humanity and history and whatever man, the cruelty of man to man, and basically tracing historical events, they could be included and they have done different presentations before for the community and for the district. So they could be an organization that we could, on our approach. I hope that Abamontian, just out of her good heart, being a good citizen and good person, maybe she would also recruit some of the professors, because I don't think professors would go for the money. We can do a little celebration if need be, you know, chiefing off and have a dinner or something for them. But we could have historians to come and talk, we could have Marashion, you know, GCC people, you know, to come and discuss. So for historical presentation and talking about that event, or even Abamontian herself, she is a great presenter on that topic. So she can become the person who would talk about the historical, but it would be nice to have a panel of different group of people. It looked very nice last year, it was very wholesome. So we could do that. Or we could have even talked to, I forgot, artist who was in the committee.
Oh, Galust.
Galust. Galust could get a panel of artists maybe to come and talk about how they feel and how they produce art. Somehow, I really hope, maybe this is just, I'm dreaming, I really hope if we could have a group of good volunteers who want, because you know, it, well, with the Armenian community, it touches their heart, it's their heart and soul, it's their history, it's their life, it's their blood, it's there they breathe. So I do believe that if any one of them is approached, they would come and do it as an honor to discuss their pain and anguish. I know with our Jewish community, they have a big story to tell and they would be willing to be part of this and to come and do. And with African-American community, I'm sure, you know, it's just, we need to touch and find the right people to generate the energy and to bring and introduce people who, and then it goes all over with the Asian community. I mean, there's no end to the suffering of man and the inhumanity of man to man. So what do you guys suggest?
Do you have any comments?
I just had another thought, to the extent that I'm familiar with it, but I know through the, through the main library that there's the reading series that they have for, like, publishers and writers. I'm just wondering if there's any resources in there of either local or area writers that have written on these topics that can do as part of sort of an artist panel and readings from selected works, that type of thing.
That would be a great source to go and into, sort of, to introduce ourselves even to people that we are not aware of and we don't know and they are in the community and they would be willing to. It's just, we need to have, now, if, this is the issue, if only two people from the Commission can be part of it, I wanted to see, could you help with this? I mean, is that okay, we talk to you as well? So if we could have maybe commissioners do some of the research work, not as part of the subcommittee, but as a commission, can we do that?
Yeah, you could, you could have individual members research some of the things, bringing back to the entire Commission, you know, what you found.
Okay. So that way, do we have to have the committee come to the Commission meeting? So the commissioner who has done the research would introduce to the public and to the committee members that way? Because otherwise, if the commissioner comes to the subcommittee, then it would be sort of, yeah, I know, the way, I've got used to mics, you know, this and this. So that, that would be the only way to do, and that would be perfectly fine, because community would get to know of all the research, the information, if there is such a thing, while our subcommittee people would also take notes and, you know, do whatever need be after that meeting. That's, that would be great. Thank you. Thanks for allowing us to do that.
My thoughts are that, well, number one, it's, I'm kind of actually disappointed that I was very much hoping that the powers that be that, you know, put aside and begin planning the month of remembrance would actually, by seeing the fact that they actually gave us some time last time, that we could actually pull off an event that the city has probably not seen an event of that magnitude on a city property. So I was hoping that this year, they'd give us even more time and maybe a little bit more resources, but I'm very disappointed off the bat that they're not doing that for us. Having said that, I think that there is still possibility, of course, to make a nice event happen. And however, my thoughts that are that we cannot do it with, last time, our subcommittee consisted of basically six or seven people.
Seven.
And, well, if we're counting Mrs. Abamontian, then seven. And of course, we had Ripsime man the helm from the city employees section, and of course, Elisa Resnick, so that makes it nine, I guess. And still, we, we had so much work on a singular basis. I mean, granted, we're volunteer, but I mean, it was a lot of work on all of our shoulders. And a lot of last minute things kept popping up left and right, but we managed to deal with it. However, this year, we have even a more limited amount of time and we're thinking about going even further outside of our box. I mean, visual arts, and we even hired a curator, we're not gonna have that opportunity this time. So I think, I think our subcommittee is gonna have to be even larger and include more city employees or staff or, I don't, I don't even know, I mean, with the idea that Commissioner Dever just spoke about, I think with that, we're gonna need even, because that's not, I don't think, up any of our alleys, being tied in with the literary community in Glendale. So I think we're gonna have to include a lot more people who are, and then the more people that we have included, the more possibilities for somebody to be connected to somebody else. I think with, you know, with the project goals that we had in mind last time, I think, you know, our, our subcommittee was well situated enough that we could pull off things like that, because it was almost perfect. Every one of us had, had this little niche within the community that we were aware of and that solved all of our problems. We got, we just pulled together different parts and it just seemed to happen that it happened to work. So I think this year, though, I think we're gonna have to think a little bit more outside of the box with those small events that we do, those quirky events that we can have. But again, we don't have the, and this is another reason why, is because we don't have the financial, we're not financially situated this time, that, I mean, we're not, there's not enough time to do any fundraising. It's absolutely, it's ridiculous, almost. There's just no, there's no time for us to do any kind of fundraising to, I mean, last, last time, we had, what was the figure?
We had that one lump sum, 10,000, then we had...
10,000.
Then we had...
800.
Then we had 800. And somehow, we, we came up to 12, I think, $12,000, 12, about $13,000, and then we were short of some and I think city somehow...
Right. So I mean, we're not gonna have that kind of luxury this time. There's just, just timing wise, there isn't that time to go and do that, to fish for funds and so forth. So I think the more, the more inclusive we are, the hopefully, the more favors we'll get from somebody knowing somebody else and so forth and so on. And being a little hopeful, I think, but still. I mean, are there any, any ideas from anyone in terms of what possible, I mean, programming ideas that are out there? I mean, Commissioner Dever just spoke of one about getting literary, the literary arts and some kind of a panel, discussion panel about writing about genocide, Holocaust, or any kind of Mens in Humanity to Men. Are there any other ideas similar to that?
I would...
Or differing from that?
I would like to see...
That's what I'm looking for, differing.
I would like to see if we could, I don't know who would want to do that and who has the time, basically, to start. Getting in touch with the Anthropology Department of UCLA or USC and GCC, which is our own community, and to see if they would like to recommend anybody in that department. It could be students who are in that field and they are doing researches in that area. It could be professors who are teaching the field and they would like to be part of it. As I said, Facing History is an organization that has done major presentations for educational institutions, organizations, bringing in people and discussing that. So that is as far as historical presentations. As far as poetry, we still can go back to Lori and then, and then other people or in, I know our timing with the, our TV broadcast is not that desirable as far as getting too many people to see who could watch us by saying that, is there anybody who would like to volunteer or introduce people or bring in, as far as poets and poetry groups that they would like. But even with poetry groups, with Lori, she knew the group, she knew what they were doing, so we were not too shocked. Otherwise, we have to have a group that does the selection and listens, like the American Idol, that we have to sit and people have to come and do all the poetry and then all that stuff. So it becomes all a bit difficult. So we have to be a little bit selective as far as somebody who really knows them to introduce. And meanwhile, I wanted to say, my friend, don't get frustrated about the funding and the city, because all of the organizations and governmental organizations are, they're suffering with their budgets and it is a very tough time. So budgetary situation is such that not that they are capable of doing it and they don't, it's just, we have to cut from every corner. So if we feel okay with it, it's easier to proceed, but when we are frustrated, it makes us all...
I'm not frustrated at all, I'm just saying that, and I understand that everybody has to...
Disappointed, I'm sorry.
Not even, I mean...
Good, I'm happy that you're not...
I'm not, I'm not as, you know, upset about the budgetary stuff, because I mean, I understand, of course, but I'm just, time is of the essence and that's what we, that's what we were kicking and screaming about at the end of last time. So I mean, and if we had more time, we could have done this and that and the other thing. So that's what I'm, that's what I'm most frustrated about and disappointed.
That's correct.
But I, the money, we can do a lot of things for free, I mean, I've, I think I've played enough free gigs in my lifetime to buy me a nice little house or something.
Can you find musicians also, that they could come without money this time? Just for the love of mankind?
I, I think, I, I think I could do that. I think that's not, that's not out of, that's not out of, you know, reasonable expectations.
So, if that's taken care of, sort of, kind of musicians and the music pieces, which you are an expert, you're great, and we are so glad to have you with us all the time. The fact is that, so, that could be taken care of. Poetry, we can go back to Lori, and if anybody has anybody else, we can introduce, okay?
If not, I know some bookstores, maybe we can, we can cross-reference and see if they have any literary people that can be involved.
But then we have to screen them, that's the issue. That would be good.
Well, we're in discussion anyway, so we're just throwing out ideas.
I know, but you know, I'm talking about other repercussions too, because, by the way, when we are doing it, not only for the commission, we are doing it specifically for the city as well, as part of the city event, we have to be very careful in whom we are picking and what we are presenting.
And actually, I was, I was going to ask you, Commissioner Dever, since you are on the bigger board, the bigger committee, excuse me, to get further clarification as to possible venues that we have, possible dates, maybe they don't want us to do something too big this time. I mean, again, because they've kind of cut down on, you know, the lead time to it, well, the lead time they gave us, I'm, in my head, I'm saying, in my, in my head, I'm going to be, I'm thinking that, you know, there's a little bit of a cutback in terms of the, you know, maybe the venues that, maybe the Brand Library is not even available to us.
No, no, the Brand Library is not, but they were talking about places such as, if need be, it's Central Library, if need be, the Police Department, you know, has that conference room.
The, the conference room.
Conference room, which is a beautiful room, spacious and nice, and in, in the center of the city, or other locations, because for, for the poetry and music and for the panel discussions, we needed that smaller room in Brand Library, so we can have a room within that space. So, space would not be an issue. If we want to put, let's say, four nights of event, not on the day that they have the major event, which I suppose could be twenty-third or twenty-fourth, it could be even the other four nights of the week, it could be three nights. If we have a good program and we could discuss with them, it could be anytime, because this is in conjunction, you know? And, and I don't see any problem if we would have, you know, the Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, or two days or three days, and then, because they are planning a wonderful event for the actual day, but this would be very nice to have a week. This is very inclusive, you know, the whole idea is that, well, on the twenty-fourth, we specifically mostly talk about the Armenian genocide or the April twenty-fourth issue, but when we add the rest of the week, include all the other communities that we live among and with, and their miseries and their sufferings, it, it is a very healing, as last time, it was my mission, it was my mission in life to have that man's inhumanity to man, because I wanted to make sure that everybody understands that we, we hurt for our pain, but we hurt for everybody else's pain, otherwise, it makes no sense. So, that event, that's why it was so inclusive. So, that's why I think City wants us there too. So, we are there, we are okay, it's just, I don't think staff time, I don't know how much staff time you could get.
Right, and that's another thing, is how much does the city want to commit to the, the specific MIM subcommittee? And, and because, right now, it sounds like we're getting very little, very, very, very little, and without, without staff time, there, there really isn't at this point, because we don't have the money to hire somebody else to basically do all the side work, we're not going to have a lot of ability to work, to do something behind the scenes in terms of, you know, when we're not in the meeting, somebody's got to call people and get meetings together and all that kind of stuff. And, I mean, there's not going to be enough time to do that, if, if we're, if we're only going to have a few hours out of Ripsimeh's time.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
Sorry, Ripsimeh, you're being thrown under the bus here.
I know someone, the name of Ripsimeh, who would volunteer a lot of time.
Staff will help you any way they can, I will, as much as I can.
And we know that, there's absolutely no question.
Definitely, I know this year's MIM will be a smaller project and easily managed, and unfortunately, I will be very busy with the open studio tour. We got the brand gallery reserved already, I'm excited about that. So, but we will do the promotion, anything we can. We have a very good data from last year, which can be used again, and helping with the press releases, with promotion, I'm sure there will be a lot of other things that we can do.
That one I would like to take also to the big committee, to see if, as I said, the publicity part, the promotion part, the, the press part, if there is any, if that could be as part of what they are going to be doing for that week. So, if that.
If it is connected with the community, with the main committee, then it will be promoted under one title.
It is, this is, this is how they see it.
Okay, last year, it was completely different.
Yes.
They had two different projects, so.
Commissioner Dever, did you have a question?
Yeah, given the limited resources and the limited time, I'm wondering if there would be potential of, of approaching it almost in sort of the open studio tours way, in that you have independent dance studio companies in town, there are theaters with their own spaces, there are independent galleries, there are coffee shops, that if given a, a guideline for hosting their own event during those days within this theme, that the city could put its sort of name over as an umbrella, that that would have, that would help them gain an audience, because they'd be having people go to their spaces that they might normally not, and give them an opportunity to sing creatively and produce creatively under this umbrella, where they get the recognition from the city's involvement, if that would be a way of sort of dispersing the energy and also coming up with venue spaces.
I love that idea, it's an excellent idea.
The only, the only, I mean, of course, this is, we're, we're discussing openly the difficulties of managing such a project. Last year, for example, we had a theme that tied in everything together, all the poetry, all the music and all that. So, I, I'm, I don't know if that's going to happen this year or not, but that's something to take into consideration, are the themes going to match up? Are the different places that we're basically subcontracting in a, in an odd sense, or asking them to participate in this kind of thing, can they, what kind of a product are they, are they producing? Is it in line with, with where the intentions of the city's, city is? Or if there's, basically, I, I'm trying to find a, this, the artist in me is trying to look for a connective tissue, because we can, if we did that, that would be the easiest thing that the city would have, could ever think about, putting their stamp on something and say, yes, go do it, because there's a lot. Then every, every single music school in the city, every single arts program, every single thing would blossom and say, oh yeah, we're going to do this because we have city sponsorship. Granted, we're only putting a stamp and just giving them press for it, but everybody would be doing it.
What if, if for instance, as part of sort of, in, in order to sign up for this and have that sponsorship, that you agreed to, you know, meet these certain, these certain guidelines, and if a recognition was given at the end of it all for those that maybe came, really advanced the purpose and advanced the mission of whatever that theme was for the year? So, they had a goal in mind too, that, that they're thinking, we're, we're advancing this, but they were also kind of being, looked at the final product and maybe given recognition for that at the end of, of the entire event.
I, I like that idea very much. I know that if we choose a theme, and imagine, imagine, if all the different organizations, like, for example, LARC, okay, if they would have that week an special event dedicated to this event, and they would, you know, people would go to that, even movie theaters or playhouses, or as she said, dance groups, organizations, if each one on that week, there might be several ones, you know, that that would be the theme that they would choose, and City would say that this week, we have this, that, and the other organizations, and community can go, these are the nights and these are the hours. So, that, that would be a fantastic way, and I, I do believe, it's just, we need to choose them right, the organizations, and maybe to have a little preview, if possible, to talk to the dancers and et cetera, and the people.
And this thing, but who's going to, who's going to look, who's, who's going to be responsible for making sure that they meet these requirements or whatever it is? Number one, number two, we don't, we don't have the manpower to do that, that's just, if half the, half the arts organizations, then they'll decide to do something, then somebody's going to have to be responsible to go ahead and make sure that the meeting, whatever guidelines, that the, that the, not only we, but, you know, subcommittee and the, maybe even the large committee would want to have a say, that they would have to meet. And the third is actually that we're under a time constraint, so if you're asking a theater program to put on something in two months, that would, or if somebody came up to me and said, Armon, can you do a, you know, a concert right now, today, you know, you know, for April twenty-four, or whatever the date happens to be, I'd look at them and say, you're crazy, and unless you're giving me a million dollars, I won't do it. But I'm being facetious, but.
I mean, to clarify, I'm sorry, but to clarify on that point, if, if theater company, for instance, may, would not have the time to put together production and think about, unless they already happen to have something on their agenda, but if they have a Monday evening when they don't have a show, and they'd be willing to open their lobby for a reading or for just a, a discussion with, with somebody on a lecture, I think, or, or something that happened before their event, they had a show that evening, but there was an instrumental piece that needed a venue, and then they could come before show for the audiences, they were coming in for the show for the evening. So, it doesn't necessarily have to be that they have to create a new work, but that they have some sort of, providing the venue in some way for some of these other ideas.
Well, that's, that's a valid point. But at the same time, we still have to think about, you know, who's, who's going to be going around and making sure everybody's doing what they're supposed to be doing according to the guidelines, and what, under what kind of time constraints are they under to create something to show? Because, I mean, for example, if an arts show, I mean, or not an art show, but I mean, you know, let's say a theater, so somebody's, somebody's put on a play, the play isn't ready the night before the show, hopefully, but of course, my colleague, Commissioner Dever can understand that concept, except, you know, sometimes they are put to the last minute, but you're always crossing your fingers, and we, we, I would be hesitant to put, you know, a stamp of approval on anything of the sort, so.
I, I, I mean, part of it's philosophical too, and you all certainly have far more experience with this, because I'm coming quite, quite new to it, other than, I did see it, the, the, the event last year, and I did think it was wonderful. But I think part of it is, if you are inspiring a community of artists towards this goal, that to some extent, you have to let the bird fly and not worry too much about controlling it, and know that some is going to work for some people and some wouldn't regardless of whether it's high art or not, you know, because it's such a subjective viewpoint. And I think, to some extent, you have to, to let that go and trust.
Well, I'm.
Or I, I would recommend maybe trying something like opening it up to the public for, you know, first come, first served basis, and maybe just pick ten, for example, or whatever we think is manageable, maybe two or three, you know, studios or, you know, playhouses, and, and, and then evaluate, make sure they meet all the criterias, if they don't, then we move on to the next one, and, and just utilize a couple for this year and, and use it as an eye-opener to see if it's, if it's a, it fits in what, what our goal is. You know, we try a few, and then if it works out really well, then we know, next year, we can open up a little bit more, the year after, a little bit more, or, you know, even get, if, if we get sponsorships in the future, to make it full-blown immediately, if, if we know that, you know, it's, it's going to work.
I would be a little bit hesitant, because, again, this is the city of Glendale, you know, it is a major, and then we have, we are a city that we are, I don't know, the second richest, the second poorest, I heard in one of the researchers once they were doing, and then we have such a diverse community, and I would be a little bit hesitant on just letting the bird fly, even though I'm a person of a bird-fly person, I'm, you know, free-spirited about a lot of issues, but on this one, I would be a little bit more selective, but I would like in general to make sure that, if that would become an event that we would invite for next year, that means from now on, to say, you know what, next year, community eight people, all different organizations, if you want to put in your repertoire, something that would be within the theme and I think of the event, and during the year, if that is something that is doable, we could even have a chance to go and see, or become more familiar with the styles of people. You know, if you are familiar with a producer and the conductor, if it's a music, and if it is, you know, what's the style of that organization, more or less, it's easier to trust, yet otherwise, we have had friends even on our diocese, that sometimes we, you know, things could have blown into different directions and could have been very explosive. So, I, I would prefer first to go with people who know people this year, and then also, I would love to have the idea to let the community know that if anybody wants to, please prepare, and, you know, let us, let the commission know throughout the year, so then we could include, that could be a whole month again, of different organizations providing different activities under the man's inhumanity to man. It would be, the magnitude might be much bigger than whatever we have produced before, because this would be organizations who are going to be in charge of making sure things are working, but that, that's a year, at least a year's work in advance. And we, throughout that time, we could even arrange for commissioners to go to these different organizations to see some of their other work, to, to get to know them, so that, that's a longer process. But for the short time, I believe the same way as you invited people for music, and if you would know poets, and if you have artists, or if you have people who are willing to do small skits, we used to have people come to our commission and do their little skits. So, so they can come and show, or give us a taste, and, and again, as I said, historians with the dog, get in touch with our universities and, you know, see if the departments would have people to introduce, so we'll make it, or if we have no time, we can tell the city, this time, we are really sorry, we are too constrained with our budgetary issues, that is also okay, you know, it does, it's better to produce a good thing, or to be responsible to present something good, rather than just to do something. But because I saw how in short period of time, you introduced those artists and you chose last minute the musical pieces that they're supposed to do, I'm still hoping on that.
The great thing was, see, that they already had played the pieces like two months before, and I happened to know about that. So, if I had no idea that they'd played those pieces, we would have been stuck again, and we would have had to pull out, I would have, I would have had to, been forced to pull out another rabbit out of my hat, and, which I, I could have done, but I wanted the best in terms of quality, musical, it was like, it was, is a musical display of ideas.
Yes.
So, and, and again, we have to think about the time constraint here a little bit, and I, I might, I, I think that's something that we, we have to all consider, is that, do we have enough time to put together a product that, I mean, last year's precedent, I think, was so high, that to fall short of it by a lot would be a very bad thing, and would be almost demoralizing, I think, for the artistic community in Glendale, to, to see where we were and to see how far we fell back, because, I mean, last year's was an, almost an international event, we had artists from all over the world participating, and we were playing music from, you know, different places of, of the world, again, from different composers, and it was twentieth century stuff, and it was really, it was really pushing the envelope in a sense, and to kind of fall back into the safety of, okay, well, this is a good, safe option for us, you know, to do, because we can do it, and we have enough time to do it, and we have enough volunteers, I, I think is settling for, you know, fourth best. And, you know, there's, there's a level of integrity, I think, this event, I, I think we, we kind of forced it on ourselves with, with what we did last year, that we have to, there, we, almost, we have to maintain that, that level of quality of the product. And I think, I think to settle for anything less, less, not anything less than that, I mean, I can, I can understand, we can all understand that, you know, one year, we do take a step back again to launch forward, but to take, you know, a couple steps back, I don't, I don't think is going to do anybody any good, especially our artists already, I, I mean, the, the city of Glendale is not the most, you know, artistic locale in the world, so, I mean, to, to. So, I mean, to, to give any kind of opportunity for, you know, distrust of, you know, the city as an entity in terms of, you know, artistic quality and artistic endeavors, I think would be a bad thing at this point because we're, we're on the path of going forward and achieving things. I mean, just the fact that we've even been in discussions with the Rachmaninoff competition until today is, you know, I think something to, there's something to be said for that. So, you know, I'm, I mean, that's something that we all have to, I think, question and to keep in the back of our minds is that, you know, do we, do we want to throw ourselves, you know, under these circumstances into projects that we may or may not want to do? So please do keep that in mind. Are there any other comments, thoughts or questions? Because this is only a brainstorming session. I want to remind all of us.
And, you know, some of these ideas, some of the, if you guys have suggestions as far as organizations or that you think that would be fantastic, even if we cannot recruit for the Mancin Humanity to Man, we can, I could give their names and we could recruit them for the major, the main event. And I was thinking of somehow, was that Yuri, what was his name? He came and he, his choir presented for us at the Diamond Award, do you remember? Some years ago at Brand Library? Oh, I wasn't here.
Yeah, I don't know either. Was it, you mean Mikhail Avetian?
Mikhail Avetian. And he did it for, I think, for April 24 also. Like, for example, he is great and his choir is phenomenal. Lark could be invited as far as, you know...
Actually, Lark has a very, very important piece in their repertoire that they, that I actually was in the choir at that time when they performed it by Monsurian. It's really an amazing, touching piece.
We could, we could have them even two nights off. It doesn't need to be, definitely presenters or historians. We could have two nights of maybe even Lark presenting.
Well, I mean, the bottom line, I think, is, is just like last year, I think we spent two or three meetings deciding on what the theme was going to be. And after we picked that theme, everything kind of just fell into place through, through the people that were on the subcommittee. So I think, I think at this point, if, unless anybody's objecting, I think we're all, we all have food for thought enough. And I think at, well, either next special meeting or at our regularly scheduled meeting next month, we'll have, we'll be able to make some kind of a solid decision in terms of who's, who's going to be on the subcommittee and so forth. And maybe even discuss different ideas that, you know, any of us have.
If we push it to next month, so that would be February, and the event is in April. So you're talking about one month. So that makes it an absolute impossibility.
Which is why I suggested a special meeting before I let it linger to the, yeah, I think there's, there's, there's going to be another special meeting planned, but stay tuned for that.
Can't we do it via email, a special meeting? No? Just a yea, nay? And then all people would, you will count and see how many yea and nays and go down. Because...
Well said, you all leave it.
Basically, the idea is a yea, yea, nay. And then if it's a yes, then...
But we also need to, we also need to figure out subcommittee members and so forth and so on.
That, that would be, that could be, I don't know, what should I say? I just...
Michael, can I ask if there's anybody, any of my colleagues that are interested?
Yes, may I ask?
Serving on this committee?
And then next time, you can decide.
And then next time, we can consider. Is there anybody that's interested specifically in serving on this subcommittee as of now? Just, just giving a thought?
I'm going to be there, so I'm there.
Okay, you're stuck.
Yeah. Because I need to be condescending.
I mean, I...
Just to confirm a question for council, if Commissioner Diverstein is already in there, but under...
Not already in there, but I think I definitely need to be in there because I should be in connection.
Because she's going to be serving as a liaison, almost.
Right. So she would retain her commission position as being in there? Or can she as an individual be in the main committee?
Representing the main committee in the thing. Does it work that way?
Will there be a conflict or...?
I don't think it's a problem, but I will get back to make sure that it's okay by your next meeting.
That way, we could choose two people, two other people also. I think that would make it...
Which is what I meant last, last month.
Correct. On the last meeting.
Last, yeah, last meeting. So, I mean, I'm definitely interested because, because I, again, my connections will have, I mean, I know a lot of people in the right places for things like this.
Musical part of the...
Definitely the musical part of it. But, I mean, if anybody else has interest in it, I mean, please voice your, you know, your interests so that we can all, you know, go home and think about it.
I mean, I would be happy to help. I don't know that, that my knowledge is going to be particularly helpful. So I wouldn't want to, you know, take a slot that would be better used by somebody else. But I would be happy to be as a resource and help where I can.
Sounds very good. I said, you're such a good appointment.
Okay. I already checked with GTV6. And the only time that they have available for a next special meeting is next Monday, the whole day. So if you could maybe agree on the time, I can go ahead and start making the arrangements.
Monday is what? The date, February 1st?
February 1st.
It's not going to work for me.
If it doesn't work, following week, that week and the following week.
Absolutely. That's actually the first day of my school and I'm there until 10 o'clock at night. So that, that takes care of it.
Which means it will postpone until here.
Somebody can take my place as chair. Not a problem. I, yeah, I don't have to necessarily be here to, you know, to facilitate a meeting. I'm sure somebody else can do that.
So Monday, next Monday will be okay? What time?
Is there any other time next week?
Next week, besides Monday, there is no date available. And following week is completely booked.
So then it leads us back to the commission, our normal commission meeting?
Almost.
But it'd be impossible to, to do some kind of an event like this. The timing is just, it's not, it's not enough to do that. So I, I mean, I'm suggesting to my colleagues that the meeting, you guys should have a special meeting on, on Monday and, and take care of business then. And whatever happens is whatever happens.
If it's Monday, 5:30 I can, not sooner and not later.
If 5:30 works for everybody?
Five? No, the 5:30 earliest?
5:15. 5:30 is the best. We don't want you to get in an accident.
6:30 would be my recommendation.
6:30?
Yeah, because then I have the two little ones.
The little ones, yeah.
I gotta pick them up at 6:00. So...
If it's, oh, but if it's a yea and nay, because we are not going to do major decisions. We need to just make sure that we are going with, today, since we couldn't do anything else, we're just brainstorming. That day, we are not going to be brainstorming about this. We are going to say, do we want the commission to be, to be responsible for the Mancin Humanity to Man? Number one. And number two, who are the two people who would want to be, or, and Mike would let us know? Mike or Michael? I always call you.
I'll respond to either.
It's like our super producer, as long as nobody calls me Mikey. His name is Michael also, so... So, and then you could let us know if I could be just the liaison participant?
Yes.
And then if we could have two others or it should be just two, and then we'll decide who are the two. Those are all basics. So I think by 6:00, we should all be home.
Okay.
If that's the decision.
Yeah. I think the biggest decision you guys have for the next meeting is...
But make sure that we could be...
She's going to be chair.
We make sure the agenda comes that way so we don't...
Definitely.
Okay.
Yeah, let's make sure we have an action.
The main item will be the appointment for the subcommittee.
Now, for, for council, we can always nominate somebody who's not present, right?
But there's, there's, I'm going to let Michael handle this one because, so we're all on the same page that what does, what, what does the wording need to be?
You certainly would want recommendations for, you know, putting forth this...
Presenting.
Presenting the man, Mancin Humanity to Man. And also the appointment of two members of the subcommittee.
Yes.
So that's what's going to be on there?
And Mike would take time to make sure it's not more than five minutes. He would do one of these and it was...
Staff and I will make sure that, you know, it gives you the leeway to make the decisions so it'll be properly worded. Okay?
Okay. That would be good. Thank you very much. That way, at least we would have a little bit more time to see if we are going to call a subcommittee.
Goes back to my question, is it okay for us to nominate somebody?
He's not here.
Okay.
He's going to check. That, that's going to be his homework.
Because if he's not going to be here and he's very interested, leave him out.
Well, I've, I've already expressed my interest in doing that. So it's up to you guys next, on Monday, to figure out if you guys want to put me on or not. So...
No, no, not that. That can we if you're not here? Can we nominate and...
Yeah.
You can, right?
I think, I will verify whether you can. And the chair has expressed the interest in it, so...
So that way, if, if we can, sort of, we have two strong candidates, being myself and Armon. If they let us, let me be the liaison, definitely, we, we can let go of you anyhow. That's the story. So we are going to have you, and I want to pull you even to the big one, to the big committee. Because, you know, we have many people who have knowledge and information about music, generally speaking, but not the classical part of the deal. So, or that's my assumption. So I would like to see some of that. But if I could be the liaison, so definitely we have you, then we have to choose to see who else would like to be part of it. So sort of, we kind of have the people in mind. It's just the third possible person is not clear yet.
Okay. Any other thoughts, comments? Okay. I think Arlette should be the chair at the next meeting. She's spoke a lot today, Arlette.
I know, I know.
You came out of your box.
I just, you know, this is, this is such a major issue.
I know. You, you take this very close to your heart.
It is. Because I really want to be inclusive. Truly, I think in a diverse community, it feels so good to know that there are so many people who are aching like us and they have history like us. And we are all human beings. We all have gone through suffering. I don't think there is any, any ethnic group or any racial group or any mankind who hasn't gone through the pain and suffering. So when we talk about the general pain of how man could be cruel to man in different ways is a major theme that, and in the middle to remember that major event, which is close to my heart as well. But, you know, I want to make sure that we are all on one and we feel the same way.
Very well said. With that, I think we will adjourn. Thanks so much.